Glad to have a good turnout for that. Thank you all for being here. In our usual custom, we will call until last 16th, 2019, order and move our normal...
Heavenly Father, we are gathered here again today to conduct the business of the Van Alstine City Council. We graciously thank you for blessing our town, blessing our citizens, blessing our first responders for taking care of us, and blessing our leadership. We ask you, Father, to grant us the knowledge, the wisdom, and the ability to carry out the affairs of this meeting and the business of this city in a way that you see fit. In your Son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to be Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Citizens, who would like to say something? Mr. Ryan?
Yes, sir. Just a couple of... I spent today at the VME, because I know where I'll be quarter that seven and a half hours later. Just as it comes to those that haven't renewed their driver's license, which will be now doing real ID, which requires reverse identification. If you don't bring your reverse identification, you cannot renew your driver's license. Just a heads up. I had to run all the way back to Plano to Van Alstine and then back again. So I also had the opportunity to drive on Kelly Road multiple times. Can we do something about the tar? Because I feel like I'm driving my little Mini through a tar pit.
It's some of the finest tar we can come up with.
I know. It's a little sticky. And I blame the tar on my speaking ticket.
So we're trying to escape the tar?
That's it. But I think the tricky thing is I want to make sure everybody aware that you need to do that for your reverse identification. People need to know that at any time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We have one other person who wishes to speak, Mr. Jim Boyce.
Just want to thank Lane Jones very much for the unwatched one Kelly lane. It has helped tremendously. And I do understand that y'all are addressing that. And so I just appreciate the efforts that y'all are doing to help us. I do know the people are now driving the two wheels off of Kelly lane as they drive down Kelly lane because they don't want to get the car at least on one side of their car. So that is helping with one side, but it also costs the pit. So we just want to make you aware, and I appreciate the work that y'all are doing to help resolve that issue. And Marshall, thank you.
Mr. President, just a brief couple of you. Our female conversation has had a little bit of... People know what kind of...
It'll be very brief. We're seeking bids to put asphalt on Kelly lane and eliminate or keep the chip seal as a base for that road because the road is just too heavily trafficked for chip seal and then with its heat, we're always going to have an oiling problem. So asphalt's the solution. We're getting estimates now, and then we'll figure out how to come up with the money to make it happen.
I just wanted to thank you for what you have.
Oh, yeah, you're welcome.
I appreciate it. I'm number four. As you were, I'm number five. We have a presentation by Mr. Tony Ritzfeld. Would you support or tell us?
Want to make the microphone or?
I've said you should...
I'm used to public speaking.
If maybe you told me to speak in public with a little bit, you did.
I don't want to turn my back to y'all. I'm going to ask you to sign a... Ms. Hunter, who's the prosecutor in office, come up here with me. How did we get here today? Back in June of 2017, Van Alstine Fire Department received a call from Gunner Fire Department needing assistance. It was a major trauma call, unresponsive baby. As a result, Van Alstine, in the ETJ response that they do, they responded to Gunner. And Ms. Hunter, after the baby subsequently died, we prosecuted the mother for potential known injury to a child and misunderstanding conviction. Last month it was, I had a chance to sit with her, just sat in a chair and just watched her work, basically. Very impressive work by her. But more impressive was the dedication of the first responders and who made a presentation this morning with Commissioner's Court, Dr. Janet Wood. And we felt remiss if we didn't recognize the Van Alstine Fire Department, particularly Adam Huttashe. I've worn a lot of hats in my life. I know I don't look that old, but I worked in law enforcement when I was a paramedic before. And when I saw Adam Huttashe testify about being able to take a severely malnourished and acidated, dehydrated baby and start an IV line, if you've ever had to start an IV line in a healthy person, it's a difficult thing to do. It's much more difficult than a baby, much less a baby that was in that condition and the more involved it is. And then able to also intubate that baby, get a heart monitor on it, quickly transport that child to Wilson Jones while communicating with Wilson Jones about the level of trauma care. I was blown away by... I was watching the video, and it called Adam Huttashe to testify. We learned that he has had a lot of experience in pediatric surgery in Dallas, working down there as well. So we have a very qualified medic in the city of Van Alstine. And I'm fortunate enough, this is my town, even though I live in the city of this, my son goes to school here, that's my wife. And I spend our money here, buy our groceries and gas here. We live out ETJ, but I know if I do Van Alstine Fire Department, y'all are going to come. So we want to recognize Adam. Adam, if you don't mind coming along up here. Just to have someone this qualified and just happy to watch you work under pressure, if you ever become a lawyer, you'll have a job in my office. We were just blown away. This is a... On behalf of the Grayson County Criminal District Attorney's Office, we present to Adam Huttashe in recognition of your self-dedication and commitment to the protection of the community of Grayson County. And I will let Ms. Hunter present this award as well, so she can get her picture here. Because she was a trial attorney for Hedges in that case.
Hi. I also wanted to throw in the fact that while he was doing this, even though he was in the business of saving a life, he was as astute as law enforcement. So it was his observations in part that helped me obtain the justice in our case, the details he remembered. And that is chalked up to his experience. So very grateful that you're there.
I still got the...
I have still got the...
I was five. Pursuit of the following designated sections of Texas Government Code, NPA, Subchapter 5501, the council will enter into objective session to discuss the following items, section 551.071, consultation with attorney pending or unplanned litigation, or on a matter in which the duty of attorney in the Texas judiciary rules of professional conduct of state law of Texas, clearly conflicting with Texas Open Meetings Act of authority, I cause number CB190949, Jody Carr versus VA EDC, and et al., two, a claim or assertion circulated by former employee, and under three, meaning all items listed in the agenda for open session. Six forty, I'd encourage each of you to stay because I don't think it's going to take us very long, and we have a really ambitious agenda now. And I would like everybody that can possibly stay to appear and be part of everything that's going on. This time we'll try to take the session. Yeah, I think seven more. We're going to talk in the recitation of the no action taken beyond the hundred eight. There's a public hearing regarding a request to replant property situated in the city of Van Alstine, Grayson County, Texas, being described as rivered, worthless addition, being part of William Crager survey, abstract number 201, and the Nelson H. Kennedy survey, abstract number 431. The subject property is generally located on the north side of County Road 375, County Road, east of Kelly Lane and west of South Waco Street, Highway 5. Here's a goal discussion room we will... Drive that. Connect a public hearing regarding a request to replant property situated in the city of Van Alstine, Grayson County, Texas, being described as Lot 1, Lot 2, replanted at the J. Hunter Center, Phase 1, accepting and not included in Lot 1, Lot 1, Lot 5, Lot 2. I have a part of Lot 2, Lot 1, Highs North Addition, being 1.093 acres in the James McKinney Survey, abstract number 770. The subject property is located at the southeast corner of North Kingdom Road, Expressway, Texan Street. Everybody hear the speaker on that? All right, with that being said, we will... Consider the agenda. On the consent agenda, we're going to consider items 10 through 17 and 21. There are items, they can actually point, we may have some public... People will talk about that. Let's just consider items 10 through 17 and 21.
You have to move, you have to bring a motion to move items 18, 19, and 20 to the ready agenda?
Yes, sir.
I'm making a motion to move items 18, 19, and 20 from the consent agenda to the ready agenda.
Have a motion. Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, items 18, 19, and 21.
I'll make motion to approve 10 through 17 and 20.
Have a motion, is there a second? Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. We'll move back to item 18. Which is considered taking the action necessary regarding a resolution certifying local funding in support of the Van Alstine Safe Route to School Sidewalk from North Park on State Highway 5, Waco Street, and Van Alstine Parkway, FM 121, to residential neighborhood near US 75, to the statewide transportation alternative and safe route to school program for funding competition in the Texas Department of Transportation, 2019 transportation alternative and safe route to school call for projects. Anyone here to speak on that? Can we do all three?
You can.
Do we need to go ahead and read all three out? Just we're not going to speak on one of these. Go ahead and it's all part of the same deal. We're just going to do it all, 18, 19, 20. Consider item number 19, consider taking the action necessary regarding a resolution certifying local funding in support of the Van Alstine Bicicade Pedestrian Trail for the John and Elmo Park Elementary School, which is more a part to the statewide transportation alternatives program and funding competition in the Texas Department of Transportation, 2019 transportation alternative and safe route to school call for projects. Number 20, consider taking the action necessary regarding a resolution certifying local funding in support of the Van Alstine Safe Route to School Sidewalk from Williams Way around North Park to residential neighborhood near Blessing Gate Avenue, to the statewide transportation alternative and safe route to school program for funding in the Texas Department of Transportation, 2019 transportation alternative and safe route to school call for projects. Let's go.
Thank you. The reason we want to talk briefly about this, this is a program that the city of Van Alstine has benefited from before. You'll all recall the construction that's going on on the west side of Highway 5 right now from Williams Way to the high school. That is a shared use path that Van Alstine received 80% of construction cost for, from this program as a grant. This just talks a little bit about what the program is. Not all of you are on council, that can be last applied. It talks a little bit about the funding opportunities and about the application process that we're going to talk about. And then I'll give you a little bit about the timeline. The funds are available, the request came out in February of this year to request funding. And the funding is, it says physically, your 1920, will be approved for them, but it'll take some time to move the project forward. There are two options. One is a transportation alternatives program, which is an 80-20 share. The city receives a grant for 80% of the construction cost. The city is required to fund 20% of that construction cost. The Safe Route to School program is a little bit different. If the city is approved for that, it is 100% grant. The city is not obligated to put out any funding at all. They'll even pay for the engineering and the design and everything else. The only thing they won't fund is the cost of right-of-way acquisition or any overrun of the construction cost if the project comes in above the budget. This talks a little bit about the non-urban versus urban. We are in a non-urban area, which means we have a population of under 5,000, and we are not part of a transportation median area. In other words, most of the suburban cities in the metroplex in Dallas and Fort Worth are part of TMA's. Van Alstine is not. This may be the last time we get to apply in that category, based on our population growth. And so we'll see. This talks a little bit about the funding that's available. There's $8.7 million in this particular round of funding for the Safe Route to Schools program. The qualification for that is that the project must be within two miles of an elementary school or a K-3 age school. And there's no point in Van Alstine that's not within two miles of a K-3 age school. So any project we put forward, we're good to go. The other program, the transportation alternatives, is the shared program, and they have $10.6 million set aside for this round of funding. There were some 263 projects that were submitted in the initial application process, but they also are accepting projects this year for conditional list for the future. And you've got $13.5 million identified for the urban funding that we're eligible for that could possibly be awarded in 2020 as opposed to this year or selected in 2020. So we have a kind of a double shot at it, if you will. Some of the criteria that they're looking for in focus areas with Safe Route to School, of course, they're looking for a need for safe travel to and from school from residential neighborhoods, looking for ways for kids can be off the street walking and not... And also, it encourages bicycling and things like that, non-motorized vehicles that can travel on a safe route off of the main road. They're looking for projects that contribute to an overall public investment in the community. And trails often do that, and that's where I think what Van Alstine has going for is that that is what's going to happen. The... They're looking for eligible activities, which is like bicycles, shared use paths, or walking, and maybe people in disabilities or whatever that have a safe place to go and travel as opposed to trying to be on the road. And they're looking for infrastructure projects that will improve safety for non-motorized transportation. This is a little bit about the timeline. The initial applications were submitted in April. Van Alstine submitted three projects, that's why you have three items on your agenda. And the next round of application is the detailed application, which is due to be submitted by August 15th of this year. And I guess you'll see that the final decision is probably not going to be until late in the year, sometime in December or even possibly early next year, before they would make a final call. I want to make sure that everybody understands one thing, there is no financial commitment by the city at this time. We are simply applying, the city is not obligated to spend a dime, even if we're selected at this point. There will be further steps that will be required before those decisions are made. This is the first project that we've identified. This is a Safe Route to School project. This would take the path that's currently under construction from the schools to Williams Way, extend it around North Park, and extend it down to the new residential neighborhood south of Blessing Gate, the residential neighborhoods. So this would basically be an extension of our existing path that were under construction with. The estimated cost, that's kind of hard to read. And I apologize for that. But it is... I'll pull my computer out. Because I can't read that either. It's $810,000 is if I put them in the right place, but that's the cost for this project. Again, if this is funded and approved by the state, this would be 100% grant, and the city would not have to fund any of the costs. The second project we put in was a project to build a sidewalk along the west side of Highway 5 from North Park, and then along Van Alstine Parkway from Highway 5 over almost to 75. So that all of the residential communities either side of Van Alstine Parkway would have a safe place to travel, getting to the elementary, middle, and high schools that are up there in that area. And again, it would basically, if we get the other one, if they connect it to the path that we already have.
As well as the existing sidewalks that were just installed in the city.
Right. And we do have a benefit because the first half of block or whatever, West of 5, the state just put in, so we have a little bit of that path. I guess I should mention, I didn't mention the other one. The first project, we've actually already designed a portion of that project. That was going to be a part of the path that's under construction now, but the funding wasn't available to fund that cost. So part of that's already designed, and that bodes well for the city as far as getting a chance to get it approved, we hope. The second project that we submitted is, has an estimated cost of 700... I'm sorry.
Sorry, you flipped it. First almost seven...
Oh, I'm sorry.
First almost seven, ten.
Okay. Okay, so this one is, yeah, 760,000, and that will carry the sidewalk all the way around, almost to 75. Did I flip almost? Okay, the third project we identified was a shared use path. This would be a wide path, about 12 feet wide, and it would go from the existing elementary school down in the downtown area, all the way down to Forestmore Park. And we would basically follow, I think it's Newport, and then follow Highway 5 on the west side down to Forestmore Park. This, again, this is one of those that would be an 80-20. The city would be obligated to fund 20% of cost, the state would fund 80% of cost. And this project's a little more expensive. This project's a little over a million dollars to build. And so, but we think that submitting all three projects is a good thing for the city. We think we have a big shot, maybe, at getting at least a couple of these, if we're lucky. And it would be a tremendous opportunity, even if we just get one, it's a tremendous benefit for the city to be able to get such a large percentage of the cost funded by someone else, and yet still improve our community. Again, the next round of application is August 15th. We will be submitting three separate applications, one for each project. That's why we needed three resolutions, one for each project.
If we, as a town of under 5,000, submit now or later over, is that, as long as you remember the guidelines, can we get it?
I believe we'd be okay, because we did submit within the guidelines. At the time we submitted, you were under that 5,000.
Can I add this part, or this, the one where he's going, the rejuvenation of that, it would help us if we get that. We only have to do the other part, the other part, and that'd be part of our... We hook into that shared path, and it would give us walking, which has been one of the biggest things that's been planned on our survey of the population and... So basically, we would be getting a shared path for safe to school, and we could get the walking path, and we'd only have to be paying for a small...
Can we make a more motion, Paul?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we... Put this approved a resolution certifying the local funding in support of Van Alstine Safe Route to School Sidewalk and bike and pedestrian trail and 100% route to school side, as outlined on the agenda.
I will second it.
Yes, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Item 22. Consider taking the action necessary regarding a request to replant a property situated in the city of Van Alstine, Grayson County, Texas, being described as worthless addition, being part of William Crager survey, abstract number 201, and the Nelson H. Kennedy survey, abstract number 431. The subject property is generally located on the north side of County Road 375, County Road, east of Kelly Lane and west of South Waco Street, Highway 5. This is previously approved by... Make a motion to approve such. Have a motion for second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Item 23. Consider taking the action necessary regarding a request to replant a property situated in the city of Van Alstine, Grayson County, Texas, being described as Lot 1, Lot 2, replanted at J., on Phase 1, accepting and not including Lot 1, Lot 1, Lot 5, Lot 2, replanted at Park, Lot 2, Lot 1, Highs North Addition, being 1.093 acres in the James McKinney, abstract survey number 770. The subject property is located at the southeast corner of North Kingdom Road, Parkway, Texan Street. Why is it... It's really weird if we can do, kind of, love new grass or something. Have a motion?
I'll... If we approve the request to replant.
Have a motion for second? Second. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Item 24. Item forty-four. Consider taking the action necessary regarding the site name for the Brooklyn property, being eight one six eight six acres, and the James McKinney survey, Act check number seven seven zero, has north addition, part of block one, block two, Grayson County fences. The subject property is generally located south of Lassikin Avenue, north of Texana Street, west of Noleley Avenue, and east of North Green Island Expressway. This is due, the reason that the approval is done. Do you have a motion?
I'd like a motion to approve.
Are the motions are second? Second. Can I second? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Item twenty-five. Consider taking the action necessary regarding amendment to the Van Alstine Community Development Corporation fiscal year twenty fifteen from that being studied. Is somebody right here to do on that?
Why, yes, there is. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, you should have our motion and the, um, amended budget. One of you has requested, uh, basically what we're doing, we're requesting twenty-five thousand dollar additions to our budget, and a reallocation of seventy-five hundred dollars from our facade program to our continued project program. Um, all in all, um, as the budget shows in front of you, we would be under water by fifty-six thousand dollars currently as budgeted. Uh, year-to-date revenue, we're up about ten thousand dollars. So if we continue on that map, we should be above water, about twenty thousand dollars, if we hope. Uh, so that gets us down to sixteen thousand dollars, being under, under budget. Um, and on top of that, there's about eight thousand dollars run number that we have to go back to the EDC Chamber and other entities to recoup some class, some of the expenses we've already had this year. Uh, so we're hoping to get almost exactly back to budget, what we said had to do with the new year. That's basically what we're doing. What we're trying to do is make sure that we have enough money in our budget currently, that if somebody comes forward or requests in the next three months, that we don't have to turn them over, and at least consider it. Uh, that we're gonna spend it, but at least we'll have that option to go from there. Any questions?
Just, just make sure, and this is an amendment.
To the CDC budget, not the city's budget. So that's, this is our, our cash.
Yes.
You gotta do it. Thank you.
I'll make a question to approve, in amendment, the CDC budget.
Yeah, a motion, is there a second? A second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Item number twenty-six. Consider taking the action, there's more, uh, there, item number twenty-six. Consider taking the action necessary regarding adoption of orders, setting the date, time, and place for the public hearing to consider it, based on the land use assumptions and capital improvement plan, and water, and wastewater impact fees amendment. Do we have anybody here to speak on that?
This is a process that the city has to go through every five years to update their capital improvement program, and it gives them an opportunity to also update their impact fees. Uh, there is no restriction to not update their impact fees before, but you are required every five years to go through the land use assumptions and the capital improvement program. We, uh, went through a process this year to update the, uh, capital improvement program for the city of Van Alstine. We looked at land use assumptions, and I'll talk a little bit about that, and we're talking about updating the, uh, impact fees that the city charges. Chapter three ninety-five of the local government code is the code under which we have to do this, and these updates are required to the land use assumptions, a population projection, along with an updated list of projected service units, which is homes, basically. Uh, and then look at the CIP, and then look at the impact fee calculations. The cities are required to use, they're not required, but they usually use their P and Z Commission for the, planning zoning commission for the advisory committee. Uh, the planning zoning commission on June twenty-sixth did, uh, enter into a meeting of the capital improvements advisory committee, and heard, we can be discussed with them, the land use assumptions, the population projections, the capital program, and they were in full support of going forward. We also showed them the impact fee calculation, which I'll show you shortly. Um, we are required to monitor and evaluate the implementation of CIP. We do that. We brief the advisory committee on a regular basis, and we're required to update those every, every five years for the impact fees. The land use assumptions that we did use this year are basically the city's zoning map, and we did not want to defer from that, so we used what we have as a zoning map. We also projected growth at a, at a factor of three units per acre, uh, which would be three homes per acre, and then three point one people per unit, which are pretty standard planning numbers, are a little conservative, but we, we use those to project population growth. This is what we came up with as far as population projections. Uh, the numbers you'll see for additional housing are numbers that might be a little familiar to you. Uh, the city manager has indicated these numbers in the past as, as projected growth, and through about twenty-six, those numbers are actual properties that we've heard from or in the process of, or are going through the development process with. In other words, these aren't pie in the sky someday, maybe. These are real-life projects that people are undergoing and taking action on. And beyond that, we, we continue the estimated growth at about two hundred blocks per year, which is a little conservative, but we didn't necessarily think we wanted to project too high. But we end up with a population in twenty twenty-nine of over twelve thousand people, as you can see, if those numbers come true. And you'll notice the increase in percentage of population is pretty significant. It's a lot more than the three percent growth that people historically project. Uh, one of the things we also had to do was upgrade the total equivalent service units, which is basically a three-quarter inch meter. Uh, if you put in a two-inch meter, that's eight service units, but every three-quarter inch meter that the city generally installs is one service unit. So with a one-to-one from population up to the term, the service unit, you'll see that in the next ten years, we're projected to grow by twenty-six hundred connections, uh, equivalent service unit connections. The only facilities that are eligible for the capital improvement program with impact fees are growth facilities. If we go out and replace water lines in the street, that doesn't count. If we need to upsize that water line because of growth, which is what we've done in Dallas Street, and this year in, uh, Jeffers, West Jefferson Street, that's a part of our capital improvement program, because we're upsizing that to account for the growth that's coming in Van Alstine. The facilities that also are required for growth, such as Van Alstine's, we're going to be in need of a new elevated storage tank in the very near future. Those, those type of facilities are eligible under the program. Our total water capital improvement program has come up with a little over twenty-four billion dollars over the next ten years to build all the infrastructure and facilities that would be needed to serve these homes that are coming. This is a map, kinda hard to read, but we can get you a map if you like, which is a little more detailed. You can see that the, the growth is predominantly around the west and the north, but we also have a huge tract of land that's talking about developed on the southeast side of the city. Uh, we commonly refer to it as a trust tract, and, but they're projecting a significant growth. We also have some water lines through the central core, and some of the water lines in the southwestern part are related to the Manchouay development, which, if that continues, there will have to be additional infrastructure there. The city mayor may not fund those, but they're at least going to have to be built, and they're factored into the growth. This is a list, again, hard to read, but it lists all the pipelines and the oil storage tank, and improvements to, uh, the city's facilities. It also includes, uh, funding that we're, we're continuing to pay for the CTMA water line, which was totally projected and totally based on growth. As far as the sewer side, it's a little different. Uh, again, only facilities designed for growth or needed for growth are accounted and are eligible for consideration. A lot of the pipelines are through the Manchouay area, which will allow Van Alstine area to serve to their, their area. Uh, Manchouay is also discussing in building a wastewater treatment plant. Van Alstine will participate, is planning to participate with that plant, and build our share of that plant, or fund the cost of our share. Manchouay will fund their share, we will fund our share. The total, including that expensive treatment plant, is over sixty-two million dollars over the next ten years for the wastewater improvements. Again, a map shows, you can see that the wastewater plant would be on the very lower left, or lower center left of that map. That would be the Manchouay area, where they've designated a piece of property already for a treatment plant. All of the pipelines you see would carry the flow down to that plant, and additional pipeline growth is needed to serve the rest of Van Alstine, even to our existing facility. It does include some improvements that our existing plant will do, uh, in Van Alstine. This is a list that we'll need to read, but it's still a list of all of the pipelines and the facilities, and you'll see the big ticket item is that wastewater treatment plant, where the Van Alstine share of that plant is about forty-eight million dollars. For a total of about sixty-two million for the capital program for sewer. When we look at the impact fee calculation, we take the total cost of those projected growth needs, divided by the total number of equivalent service units, and we come up with a maximum CIP per equivalent service unit, in this case, of about ninety-one hundred dollars. The local government code allows you to charge that amount if you jump through about seventy-four hoops. There's about sixty-eight different calculations you have to do to be able to charge that full amount. What they do is a, an opportunity for communities, is if you charge no more than fifty percent of that fee, you basically have to go as far as we can, and that's all we have to do. So that means that our eligibility would be for about forty-five hundred and fifty dollars per three-quarter inch meter as an impact fee, which is the maximum we can charge. For sewer, you can see the numbers are calculated the same way, and the fifty percent number comes up to eleven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars per connection, that we could charge legally if we wish to, as an impact fee. Um, this shows you where Van Alstine currently is. Our current impact fees are twenty-two hundred dollars for water, that was passed in twenty fourteen, and eleven hundred dollars for sewer, for a total of thirty-three hundred dollars. And you look at some of the other communities and what they're currently charging, I'll point out specifically Anna. Anna has raised her impact fees to about eight thousand dollars, about four thousand dollars each for water and sewer. And we did a, a comparison, and we looked at, here's just showing what we can charge. We could theoretically charge four, forty-five hundred and fifty dollars and eleven thousand. Now, if you were to put in a one-inch meter based on the size, that would, that would show you the numbers would go up, because that's one point six seven, or one and two-thirds of the same size of a three-quarter inch meter, and that's how those numbers are calculated. The city can charge less than the maximum, and a lot of cities set their rates to be competitive with other cities. The current calculation is, is kinda repeated here. This is gonna, this is in a written report that we have that shows how those numbers were calculated, and that report is required to be made available, and we will do so. This shows you where we currently are, and then we did an average of the competing cities of Anasalina and Prosper, and you can see that among those, the average is about sixty-six hundred dollars, or about thirty-five hundred and three thousand for water and sewer respectively. And working with staff and talking to the city manager, we've come up with a recommendation to set our impact fees going forward, uh, once this process is complete, at thirty-five hundred dollars each for water and sewer, is what we've recommended. We think that will still keep us somewhat competitive, uh, with the other cities. We believe, and we have seen experience-wise, that the increase in impact fees is not as scary as one might think. Developers aren't afraid of it, it's a pass-through cost. It does add additional cost to their cost, which they pass on to the homeowners. Uh, it's not a big issue for the major developments. It can be an issue for the internal, some of the input type things. But this is our, what we've decided to recommend this year, which would be it. Just to give you a little insight as to what's gonna happen after that, and the council, I think, needs to discuss that, and we can make a determination. We are required to have a public hearing, and that's what this item is for on your agenda, is to call the public hearing. We have to have a thirty-day notice in the paper, so the, the hearing cannot be in next month's council meeting, because that's not thirty days from now. So we'll have to do it at the September meeting. We, we will publish the, the notice in the newspaper, uh, more than thirty days ahead. We'll also make a copy of the report and the projected, proposed impact fee rate available for people to view here at City Hall if they wish to. And at the September meeting, we'll, we'll have, we'll have a public hearing. After the public hearing, the council is authorized to set the impact fee going forward. They must do so within thirty days, but they are allowed to do it at that meeting if they wish, after the public hearing. Uh, and, once the public hearing is held, then the goal will be to impact, set those impact fees, and an effective date for that, for that increase. And that will be the council's, uh, decision at that meeting. Any questions about the process?
Paul, can you clarify who is paying for this, that it's not our current residents?
Okay, yeah, well, thank you, man, I appreciate you making that. The, the benefit of impact fees for communities is, somebody comes in, they wanna develop a hundred homes or two hundred homes or whatever, and we have to build infrastructure out to them to be able to provide water or sewer service. What this does is this allows the city to benefit by having the developers, the new people coming, help fund the cost of that growth, rather than the existing current residents having to fund that cost, which is kinda fair, you know, I mean, you're, you're paying the play, if you will. If you wanna come and develop in Van Alstine, you're gonna have to pay for the cost to provide those additional services, those additional, uh, pipelines, or facilities, or infrastructure to meet the needs of that development. We don't always do that, there's, sometimes there's trade-offs, sometimes developers will come in and, and build some of the infrastructure in exchange for impact fees, but it's the same way. That way, the city is not funding the cost, and the current residents are not impacted to the full extent of what those costs are.
Well, this time, we just need to have a motion to approve to the whole public hearing.
Thank you, Paul. Make a motion, uh, approve, did not have a word, it's in the day's time, place for the public hearing, to consider updates to land use assumptions, capital improvement, water, wastewater.
Make a motion, are second? No, are second? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, thank you. Item twenty-seven, we're going to table, I think we, as council, some questions that we need to, hopefully, try to resolve termally, and, um, but that is posted, is posted, or public can read that already?
No.
It's strictly in the draft form. Hopefully, this is a sign ordinance that will affect how, how this is done. We, I think we, the council, we all read, read it, and understand that there's some internal questions that we need to kinda resolve, uh, make sure that we can explain it appropriately to the public, so we'll table that. Consider taking the action necessary regarding adoption of orders, authorizing the issuance and sale of city of Van Alstine, Texas Combination Act, and revenue certificates of obligation, taxable series two thousand nineteen, lettering, and annual annual tax, providing for the, for the security for, and payment of essential certificates of obligation, providing an effective date, and acting other provisions related to the subject. Do we have anyone here to speak at that?
Yes, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Councilors, I'm James Moles, with the Philtop Securities Agency in July, Plaza. This morning at ten o'clock, on your behalf, we opened based on the certificate's obligation, and we're promising that it's very successful. The low bid was provided by Sandville Capital, one million four hundred and thirty-five thousand, a certificate, a certificate's obligation, which would tax it, uh, at a P I C of three point three percent. Put together a binder of all the, um, items, relative to bond sale, and the first couple rows. On tab one is copied, the official statement, this October, offering random, provide rating agency movies when they apply to them, all other information, and later is distributed to investors, nation body, the land bonds, and two is the bond rating for receiving movies, and three is the said, the final numbers that we've set in place. And the process that started a month ago was to fund, took solviation, purchase land, pay for engineering, architectural, legal, and physical fees. Saying if we pass this ordinance, the, um, through the sale documents, it'll be executed. The bond council will, the address documents provided to the attorney general of Texas, he agrees and approves these transactions to, uh, ensure that all the proper procedures as outlined by Texas, uh, for the place. Takes about fifteen days for that to place, we expect to close this, uh, in, uh, mid-July. Give you a couple tie points. When we first start this process, we pick up this is a property, and, and those properties, as cities can anticipate, they'll be used for all purpose, and they'd be issued taxes at that. That time, we actually did a dividend rate of three point six percent. And when we said before, we actually approved the most of the type of start of this process. During, uh, the negotiations and the contracting, the diligence process, we found that one piece of properties, uh, it has police, the daycare center, at least those two and a half years remaining, it's an important facility with the citizens, and a small truck, that we have, so we call it Kansas Earth, we hear, so that was intended to stay in place, but because of that, um, the bonds would have to tax. But because of that, the bonds we had to tax. So we did some brainstorming. We talked with Lane, Angela, bond council. We decided to report the sale and taxable, but to anticipate that either at the end of the initial term or when the city was ready, that this terminated. At that time, it would be just perceived, we would consider taxes act. And so what we did was, we sold this uniquely in that it was sold as a taxable obligation, but it has a special tax purity clause that says that our bond council indicates that these bonds can be refunded tax-free if you call away at par and replace the taxes. So we got it taxable. And uniquely, the amount of money received on lease, I guess for one year or a little bit, the difference in interest rate from the tax entices we initially proposed, which is about $25,000 for the full term alone. So just an annual one-year lease. Uniquely, we're letting some money stay in this process. But we went forward, we went to duties. And I want to kind of, the main thing I really want to talk to you about is duties. My initial challenge to me is Van Austin, as we actually really pushed, to recognize the credit quality of this community. We sent an extensive amount of information, financial strategic, and accounts follow. And section two is the report we received. After receipt, we'll be at follow-up ratio. We discussed this, and Lane would like me to discuss a little about this. Bottom line is that we got confirmed an A2. Very disappointing, but it's what we kind of anticipated. But it doesn't really tell the truth about our presence. And this is what I wanted to do, is to look at that reading report and to look at page four of the reading report. Because it's the same thing to me, and it's, we're supposed to be objective. Fair everyone equally. The fact is, what takes place. If you look at this chart that we have here, talks about all the credit factors that they take into consideration in the internal rating. And you see the great majority of the credit factors are rated double A or high, which means in support for you as a council. And I think most importantly, for a citizen to recognize is that the things that you can control, conservative budgeting, transparency, accuracy in your financial statements, they're rated well. The variables that you can control, it really comes down to one thing. And you look at the very bottom, if you said, let's apply the criteria as our standard criteria to apply all issuers, we have a double A3 rating, which is a really high rating. But we stood at it on A2 simply because of our status, the prejudice because of size. But in the notes, they indicate that things that could cause upgrade would be operating exactly as we've been operating in both in size and the other process. So what I want to indicate to you is that, and we discussed this, you know, when we push forward in a grade, it's not something that has much subjectivity to it. It's limited by some internal policy we have. At the same time, A2 is a good rating and never lead a lot of sellers' bottoms. I'm going to just do a little bit of additional detail. These were taxable and a special call provision. We had Sanco came in and had a 3.3% fixed rate for the life of the bond. Except which is outstanding, we recommend. Probably more important thing I want to say is, currently, our debt service tax rate is 12.0%. The debt service that was calculated, if this is approved, civic forms will be presented to the council previously. And what more importantly indicates that based on literary numbers that the use of budgeting no four, that we will have no decrease in our highest tax rate. In fact, significant capacity in future years. So this itself will not cause any impact to the city's tax rate. So I'm going to stress that. So in summary, well, thanks to staff. This is the first bond issue I've been through with Lane and Angela. They give, they have professional experience. Actually, it was a bit better with institutional investors. The rate goes very smoothly. They both learned a lot and educated our ratings about that. Investors as well received it. But ultimately, the bid itself is an excellent bid. Even though it moved into taxable basis, it conforms to the criteria we had before. If range parts are, I recommend approval. I answer any questions or questions.
So because there's a lease in place on the property, or, yeah, no, that's it. Definitely everything else, that would always be the bond done taxable as well? Or just that property itself? Is there anything else, some duties or?
That's a great question, one that I've discussed with Lane and bond council. Technically, it's one issue. And the way one issue would be sold would be say, tax law, I mean, I'd be a bond council taxpayer, but having some familiarity with this concept. It's 5% of the benefit, 5% of the revenue that's generated, 5% of using no revenue generated, the assets are funded. Over 5% for the private use, which the acre slowly would be, then specific tax. This is the largest piece of property. These payments are actually, you won't see if you're more than five acres. So it caused a patch. Now, did we look at breaking it apart? We can double cost of issuance. At this size, we were able to track successfully. There's going to be a little bit less efficient to bid. So we did a number of scenario analysis, looking at if we could split it. And ultimately, it was determined that the cheapest way to get it together was a special call provision. It's a space that you might be two or three years, and then we just fund the tax. And it executed as we just made. So the answer is, we could have split them, leaving the two separate bond issues.
That's what I just said. I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that. And I think you said, what was the rate?
3.3%.
And then what we're admitting if it was a duty?
We predicted 3.6 all the possible. We actually gave it slightly lower interest rate than we did if it was a tax. I'm just stunned. Do you feel that we did our own estimates that we discussed with Lane? We just made about 4.1% use, took the tax, the current corporate tax rate, and applied it to the tax entity. So really, it was unique that the tax was sold through, and I put it on yield basis to investors. And I know that it's something you understood, I suspect.
Thank you for all your hard work and the task. This is more important.
Thank you, sir.
Firelight, you don't need a firelight. I just got a motion to approve.
Motion to second to approve, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Make sure you're okay. How do we, consider taking the action necessary regarding appointment of field to open places to the Parks and Recreation Board? Parks and Recreation Board had it open for two places, each being two in turn. One place must be filled by those in the city. One of them should be Van Austin, and the remaining place may be filled by residents of Van Austin and ISD for the city.
At Councilman Neal's urging, we went back out and added the steps back in. We surveyed each one of the city council members that are here independently. I've provided you with that outcome, where there's a majority of city council people who selected an individual that's been highlighted and yellowed.
I will make a motion to approve Amber Edwards and Ms. Kloss. Is that anything? To the Parks and Recreation Board.
We have a motion. A motion to second, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you all for agreeing to give us your time, your talent, and your soul. Just kind of talented. Truly, it's like a love, you're a worker, and I know that truly we can't get by without having a lot of volunteers. People will put themselves out, and it is the one way. On 30th, this is considered taking the action necessary regarding appointments to serve on the planning and zoning commission, place one, place five, place three, alternate place one, alternate place two. I'm going to go to the commission then over the 22nd, 2019 issue of recommendation to appoint Jim Atston to place one, Bob Henrich to place five, Larry Cooper to place three, to serve a full-year term expiring June of 2021. The commission ranked remaining applicants for the two alternate positions. The applicant appointed to alternate one will serve a full two-year term expiring June 2021. The applicant appointed to alternate two will serve the expired term taken by Larry Cooper expiring June of 2020.
I'll make a motion to bring Jim Action to place one, Larry Cooper to place three, Bob Henrich to place five, bring Edith to alternative one, and Mike Drennan to alternate ISD.
Second.
We have a motion, second, any further discussion? All in favor, pay aye.
The daily administration and city business has been challenging over the last month with many operational needs. We're developing the 2019, 2020 city budget. The impact fee study has been completed and presented this evening. We drafted an RFQ for architectural design services in reference to the proposed city administration building. We offered an RFP for solid waste collection services, secured new gen strategies and solutions to conduct a water rate study, developed revised sign ordinance, and an incentive package to help the economic development corporation secure a potential business they've been working hard to lock down. Looking into the future, 17 new building permits have been issued in the last 30 days for new home construction. An additional 19 are in our permitting office waiting for the developers to pay fees. And two more are in plan review for a total of 38 new homes over the last month. The new shared use path that will connect the high school to the middle school is under construction. The project to improve our city water wastewater infrastructure along West Jefferson is currently taking place. Our Parks and Recreation Board has held a focus group inviting many citizens from our community to provide input into future parks development. And the farmer's market is out of own its current home, and will be moving to the corner of Main and Cooper on the 23rd of this month to allow them to grow beyond the 23 vendors that they have today. Months one through nine of fiscal year 2019 was a positive financial period for the City of Van Austin. Its total revenues over expenditures came in with a positive net position of $380,923, increasing our total fund balances from $9,629,000 to $10,010,000. City Hall is doing very well at revenue collection and keeping administrative costs under budget, with both revenue and expenditures exceeding or coming under the appropriate benchmarks. The library is doing well, staying on track.
They just give their opinion.
Police department's keeping expenses below budget. Water sales remain 7% behind year-to-date. Silver at 13.45% behind. This is attributable to a never-ending stream of rain for eight months of this year. We are on track, though, with the new growth and hopeful that we can catch up. But as a safeguard, we put measures in place to control expenditures in our utility budget by reducing them $180,000 if this trend continues. So we should come out at the end of the year with a balanced budget. That's all I have, Mr. Man.
I'll throw in last word of some words. Thank you, Neil.
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming, especially seeing how there's a change from the second week to the third week. So thank you all for coming, especially the music playing out tonight. I let a lot of y'all in there, so I might get a little bit.
Put your glasses on, please.
As usual, thank everyone for coming. Thank our small business owners that are the lifeblood of our community. And thank all of our volunteers that are sitting here. Appreciate each and every one of you for all that you do. Thank our city staff for doing a tremendous job. And thank our citizens for being the wonderful community that we've got here at the, at the, and all of them. Do have a couple of announcements. Right now, we're going to switch the media this way. We've got Houston Park still going on over at Dorothy Field. Going out here.
I sent you the text.
Clint Sherman and Blackland Fever, which is in play right now. So catch your last, Houston Place, so almost dark, so.
Eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty. So we've got 30 minutes.
And there's the new big one. And there's circle N, organic aspirin.
Oh, organic aspirin. Okay.
Come on, support the chamber. Support the chamber.
Yes, support the chamber. Okay, also want to announce that our Key Van Austin Beautiful Board Meeting is next Monday, Texas Star Bank Boardroom. Encourage everybody to come on out and see what's going on with Key Van. I almost forgot that it was changed next month. It's the week showed up last night. Well, we'll be there next Monday, well, and then.
That was a practice one.
Yeah, that's right. And remember, the Friends and Library Breakfast is on the first Saturday and each month. So, yes.
Can I ask you that we moved the personal exports and the best time? What do you mean on the Wednesday? Not maybe the other time. We move back in a week.
Okay. Here's my announcement.
Yes, so they will come, they're not meeting this Thursday.
Not this Thursday, next week. Okay.
Cambridge Breakfast is that one, right? Yes. And then the after hours is Thursday, 6:00 to 7:30. We debate with the chamber.
Chamber of Breakfast is right here.
And then the one right here.
Well, as you can see, we are great deal, a lot of discussion. We spoke about the future and trying to anticipate the needs and how to finance those needs. It was really smart people working on these things, but it still requires everyone here to be here, letting us know how you see it, how you feel about it, and give us your ideas. We really are your representative, and we need to, we need to hear from you. We always have all the answers. We make the very best decision we can, but still, it's the input of each and every one that is part of this. Just Mr. Johnson talked about a great deal of growth. He saw the impact fees and what that's going to be.
to do for us and to us, you know, so be mindful of these things as we go forward. And, and if you have an idea, of course, you get it out to your council representatives and get it out to the city manager, send it to me so we can be conservative with things. You know, we are not as smart as all of you and we really need to have that, everything on. Your collective wisdom and, and, or things that we truly, truly need. And once again, thank you for all of you that have, have volunteered your time and if you're a, for, for public service, we really appreciate that. Other than that, thank you all so much.